Everybody can join us for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off, welcome, everybody. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the minutes of the February third, twenty twenty five, regular meeting in the February third, twenty twenty five budget work session.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the employee claims filed with the county auditor for two thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Yeah, I'll make the second, but some with some discussion, is there a way that we can ask the folks to put more descriptions into specifically office expenses? I mean, we sure they're buying paper and things like that.
Or the employee claims?
Yeah.
I hope they're not buying paper. They have to complete a claim form.
Right.
You're always more than welcome to take a look at those if you would like.
Sure.
We only have so much room to put a description in, that's why a lot of times it's shortened. But yeah, if there's any of the claims you would like to see, you're more than welcome to take a look at.
My question is if they write, if they have the chance to write office expenses, why can't they write whatever else was included?
It'd be a long, it takes so much, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then there's always a receipt that's attached with the detail of what it is.
Does, does it show the additional? Cause a lot of times on the claim form, there's, it's like for office supplies. Then down below for additional information, a lot of times it's kind of specifies what that items are.
Mm-hmm.
Does that?
Yeah, they can put that on the employee reimbursement, yeah.
Cause you see it in some places, but you don't see it in other places. So that's kind of why, makes me longer about the disparities. So something to consider in the future, but. Make the motion that we approve those expenses. Sir, you're in it.
I'll be good.
Second?
Favor?
Aye.
Alright. Claims filed with county auditor for two hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and thirty cents.
Make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the hiring of Kathy Walter, treasurer's office, motor vehicle clerk, effective February eleventh at nineteen fifty-nine hour.
Submit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the monthly employee health insurance reporter, but you get a look at that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a motion, please?
Submit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve monthly financial reports.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Proven monthly report from the quarters office for thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Submit.
Second, uh, would you describe why we're doing this? What's the, is this just a normal process that we do every month?
It's just approval, it's basically for your information approval of revenue that she brought, brought in.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'm sorry, who made that motion? Did you? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approve the amended twenty-eight E agreement with Delaware County Sheriff's Office.
Submit.
Second?
That was just modified to, uh, make the date non-ending. That way we can.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Yes.
I do have a question on that. So are those the daily fees we set by the state, or is that something that's set by each individual county?
It's, some counties charge sixty dollars a day, seventy-five dollars a day, depends on the agreement between the counties.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no. There's no set, even with like fed, fed prisoners, it depends on, um, the range is usually from sixty to seventy-five dollars. Depends on what services the county that's contracted with the, um, federal, um, prisoners. What they might offer if, if they take them to doctor's appointments or they're, you know, those types of things. But yeah, it's, it's just kind of set guideline. The fifty dollars been kind of set for quite a, quite a few years. Um, kind of the average of between counties.
Get the person's second?
I did, you just need to vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, we have no manure management plans placed on file. That's a rarity. Discuss issuance of employee EMS badges.
Should be EMA.
EMA.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's, I think it's basically for any, um, courthouse employee, EMA, public health, wherever.
Right.
It was recently discovered, we have a system that we do it in. And I, the clerk of court, one of their employees, for some reason their badge just dropped out of the system. I don't know what happened. It doesn't matter. So as I was going and searching and trying and getting her badge reissued, I just noticed there was quite a few in the names that I had no idea. Which I don't need to know everybody. So between working with Jason and Scott, we got it updated. Cause there's a lot of them from Raycom that need to come in and Hawkeye alarm and things like that. And I know in the past, we've always had, everything's been issued through my office. There's a form that they fill out and we keep a spreadsheet. And that's kind of gone by the wayside. And so I just kind of would like to get ideas to get it back on track. So we know who has a badge that has access, whether it be to the courthouse, whether it be to the EOC.
Right.
And we can track it.
And this kind of recently came up because I'm, because we were making badges for the new cleaners to be able to get into the EOC.
Mm-hmm. Well, when I was going through the listing, I had four. Well, I only have two.
Well, I think, I think you have like a black dot and a, and a card.
I have, I have a fob and I have a badge. But then I had two other ones.
Was duplicated somehow, or?
Yeah, somehow, I, I don't know what it was. So everything's numbered. So I looked at the numbers of the ones that I have active. And I disabled the other ones. You know, it's just little things like that.
Well, and sometimes in, in, it happens is a card.
Think go bad.
Will just go bad. So a new card or, you know, will be issued to somebody that's in the system. But it'll duplicate it because the numbers aren't the same that actually the computer that reads the, the code. On the badge, the badge has to be right. So there's a lot of times where throughout the course of the years, same employee. But a, a card went bad, replace it, change the number.
Technically it should be taken out of the system.
Correct.
Yeah, they can go in and either A, delete it out of the system, or B, just go into that employee's profile and update the badge number. So it can be done a couple of different ways.
Yeah, and I know that with the Salamander system, which is what the, um, EMA has, that. As those badges have like a proximity sensor in them.
Could be, I know nothing of.
And so that's, he started, yeah, he started issuing them. And plus they have your, you know, they have a picture, they have your ID on it. Which is probably what we will need to have. So I would like, I would like to continue having him issue the picture part of it. And then have maybe, um, you and Jason work together to turn them on and off or.
Yeah, I don't.
He can afford, Chris can afford to list you without a problem.
Yeah, he sent me information. I, I just, I just want to make sure that we don't have active, well Clayton still had a couple of them active. And that's just what I want to steer away from. I just want to make sure that the badges are in the correct hands of the correct people. And if someone leaves employment, you know, like the police, independent police officers, they have some, which as they should. But if they leave employment, that we need to be able to track that and inactive, inactivate that badge.
I think it's important to have those, those inactive, I guess, numbers, actually. Some sort of reconciliation to say that the system does recognize them as inactive. Otherwise, that can be, that can be a hacking effort later. So if somebody identifies that this number exists currently in the system and nobody's using it, then they can jump in on this.
I think there's only two, two or three people that have access to this door program.
Sure.
So, but yeah, it, it just needs to be tracked better.
To monitor where those cards and fobs are. Cause you don't want just everybody out in the world having one.
Well, and, and then, I'm sorry if I'm out of line here. But I know in the past before, you know, we kind of had the fobs and we had, um, cards with no identifiers on them. I know in the past, if somebody left that card or that fob, just got handed over to the new person. And tracking of that, you know, um, we'd actually get the card back, but it'd be, you know, them just hand it here. Use this until.
Mm-hmm.
And then that, the second part of it never gets done. They, they got access to the building, rightfully so, but, um, just not tracked on who's actually. Is still tracking whoever's in.
Yeah, I just think, you know, especially if it's a new hire, I mean, Ashley goes through all the paperwork with them. Um, I think that would be something that she could have them fill out.
Yeah, she does have a form. And that was actually where the whole summoning block came was, um, Jason wanted to scrub a lot. I'm like, well, that's fine, but these are not employees. And you're asking for a part-time or full-time position, you're, you're neither one.
Yeah, see, and we've had, we've had a form in our office for years.
Yeah. And so I don't know much. And I think that was an employee because Jason had set that up with Ashley as far as an employee form goes.
For him and Karen did that.
Okay, him and Karen did, yeah. So, so then there's a form, but then we also need to have maybe the outside agencies have a separate form set up for outside.
Something completed, yeah.
Self-contract.
Well, you know, because I, and plus, you know, the drone team has access to the drones out there, stuff like that. We probably need to have.
It's important we have a master list someplace that gets updated when, when people leave or a fob is damaged or destroyed. It's removed, right list. It just, it just seems a little too loose.
And sometimes that's the department heads that kind of. Fail at that. Tracking of that, so.
Well, yeah, and you know, like employees, if they leave employment, everything's supposed to be turned in. And I just think it was the stuff that was being missed. It, you know, stuff happens.
Right.
I'd just like to get it, get back on track with everything.
Get it taken back up.
Brandon, you guys use, I'm sorry, they, they don't use the Salamander cards either.
There's myself and Alex may are the only ones that have the, the, the fob.
Right, speaking of that.
Now, there's, there's quite a few employee, secondary roads employees that have access.
Your IDs and the cards.
Yeah. And you can actually, what we need to probably do is look into getting all your equipment out there. Um, Salamander quoted, because in, in the event of emergency, then we can easily track their time. It's all, it's done.
There's, there've been various ways I've seen of counties trying to do that, yes.
Now, will you get federal funds?
Yes.
Yeah, when you need one with FEMA.
Yeah.
And now there's a good question because there's some rumors that FEMA may try and go away. I didn't realize that there was that many of us that had this.
Yeah, there's a lot of you guys that have that. Pretty sure Jen has access to our lower level, because we have meetings.
That may be, that may be, I was.
Do we need to set static or even arbitrary reminders every quarter, every year to say, hey, maybe it's time to go over that, that process again?
Um, oh, basically, I'm thinking I'm gonna make a form for any contractor. Or even like.
Not county employee type.
Not, yeah, like a night county employee form. And, um, my staff and I will start working on updating a spreadsheet. From what we have in the system right now. And then I can just send a notice out to department heads and work with Ashley and. I think it's a very simple fix.
Right.
We just need to get back on track.
For this year, but what about in future years? Do we need additional reminders, or do you want to build that into your system as well?
No, I'll track it.
Okay.
There's, are we gonna do that departmentally? Each department, who has the?
I'll probably do it alphabetical order, because if I get a name, it'd be easier to search. And then the outside ones.
Right. And I know, I know Chris has, I was already.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Yeah, and he sent that to me.
Badge.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, he sent me a few this morning that needed to have badges and activated, like a Raycom person that no longer is employed with Raycom, but.
Right.
Who knows where the fob went?
Yeah.
So.
Sounds like you have a great plan. Do you need us to take action on this, or?
No, I just wanted you guys to know what was going on.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, discuss the sale of the Taylor Bridge.
Basically what it is, it's a wooden bridge. It's actually a two-span wooden bridge that about nineteen ninety-five or so, we came in and put a pier in. Because of the wood piling were all roughed out. And so what we would do is we would, um, you guys would set a date, we would advertise. We typically have three people interested, uh, two of them are former county employees. They would come in the boardroom, we would literally have an auction, they would have to submit a bid. Then you would ask if anybody wanted to raise their bid. It's the way it's been done in the past.
Right.
And they would raise their bids and depends on, um. Seems to be some competition amongst them. When they get face to face, the prices go higher than if we were to just try and sell them otherwise.
So it's like a sealed auction?
It's.
With a bid?
It's a sealed auction allowing a bid in the boardroom.
Yeah, it's like, almost like.
We did with the mower and all of it.
Yep. And who's typically interested? Jerry Slattery, Brian Donnelly, and Stan Dalecreed.
I just have to ask, what do they do with the, with the bridge? I'd like to know that.
Yeah, they just, well, the only bridges are interested in those that have three by twelve planks. And then they'll turn around salvage the planks, then sell the planks. And new planks being in the vicinity, close to pushing five dollars a foot. So maybe they're getting two and a half, three dollars a foot out of the planks that they salvaged.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, what do I get for a bridge? Eight hundred to fifteen hundred dollars, but it's also saves my guys tearing them out.
I never knew that we actually auctioned bridges, but.
Oh.
Yeah, we've had newspaper articles to that effect too, over the years, but yes. Now, the catch is if I got a concrete slab, some of these other structures, they're not interested in. Got a concrete deck on them. They cost a lot to tear out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about the stiff framing? Is, is that part of the auction, or?
It's all wood in this case, except where we drove the H pile and they'll cut those off and they can keep those H pile. Cause I've got piling cutoffs big time out there anyway.
Okay.
Now, when we take that bridge out, we're replacing that with a culvert, is that what we're?
No, we're placing it with sixty-eight foot long rail cars.
It's gonna be a rail car.
Yep, and the cars are on order, but all he can come up with is the flat deck. And we don't specify because you. Availability is what you gotta deal with. And so we've had communications there. All he find and force flat deck. The guy said, Brian, just, just see, see if he can't find some of the raised sill.
Outside of what?
Raised sill designs.
I don't know what that is.
What they have is a rub, hub guard on the outside edge, but in essence, it's a channel, it's welded on the outside of that rail car.
Sure.
So when I come to tie them together, I'll, I'll drop a sheet of sheet piling in there, give me another fifteen inches in width, or thirty inches. Um, run some number eights in the bottom, number fives in the top, bolt across and fill the full concrete. Simple way of tying the cars together. And when it comes to attaching the posts, you just notch in the top of the channel, weld your post on the bottom, you got your barrier post. There's a lot less work on those cars than there are the others.
Ooh.
But beggars can't be choosers, you take what you can get. And so. The communications I've had with the guys and then with, with Urban Corporation is, um, hey, we'll just drag our feet and see if we can't find these other cars. And, and so what we do in this case is we tell a con, successful little bidder, we'll give you a two weeks notice, we'll give you two weeks to tear out the bridge.
So when do we want to advertise it?
About a month from now. Open the bids about a month from now. That gives me a week to get things in the paper and.
Yeah, I sent Janet a sample of what we've done in the past. She's gonna put the ad together. I have a sample of what we've done in the past with bid sheets. I will put that together. Janet will have them out at your office and I will have them here also.
So it seem you need a motion.
So we need to set a date and a time of when to open them.
So are we looking at the tenth, maybe the of March?
Your guys' choice. That should work.
Well, that's bringing is a good idea.
Yep. Yeah, and, and do it early enough that these guys aren't hitting the fields as part of the catch too.
So when I thought this about March ten?
Time?
Nine fifteen?
Sounds good to me.
I make a motion to, um. I don't know if you wanna call it let, to do the auction on March tenth at nine fifteen.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Mm-hmm, okay, so this doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, the law for nothing.
Okay, next, uh, W forty-five STBG funding agreement.
This is a surface transportation block grant, what it is. So this is federal funds allocated to that project. And this is where we go through inter cog and try and work with them and argue on funding. And there are several games that get played. And, um, in this case, it's one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. In outside funds for overlaying W thirty-five south of Aurora. It would go from one hundred and thirtieth street, five point two miles south to one hundred and eightieth street. Yeah, why, how do you get that point two miles? Cause there's a strange curve in there where it went around Buffalo Creek.
Need to make a motion to accept the agreement.
And you'd have to sign it too then, yes. It's similar to the other federal agreements.
What was the total project cost of it?
This will be about a three point six million dollar project. And here's almost two million here, and then we've got four hundred thousand in safety funds for it. And so it's just under one years of our funding for this five point two miles of road, uh, out of our farm market account. Now, timing can be a little tight, um, because we're allowed to borrow ahead four years right now. And here I am, I'm just doing a six point, our six million dollar project this year. And now I've got another, um, three point six million dollar project.
You can borrow me ahead for that?
I'm borrowing ahead and what I have to do is I have to keep a million balance. For my catch-up bridge, when things are going on that. And so I'll gain a million and a half over the next year. My current, currently I could let an additional eight hundred thousand, that's how close I am to my four million. But if you look, like I said, this is less than one years of my funding coming out of this account. The numbers.
Actually, these are all very competitive bidding processes.
They are, they are. Yeah, it goes through, left through the aims. And then they throw a lot of the particular requirements. And a prime example right now is I cannot talk to. The contractor because he hasn't signed the contracts yet, and the state hasn't signed the contracts yet. And if I was to do that, I could lose all my federal funding. And so that, even like that little letter I handed out here is a draft. I'm ahead of the ballgame, I wouldn't dare send that out till he signs and the DOT signs agreements. Be trying to be ahead of the ballgame too.
So we need to, um, give you approval to pursue the funding agreement.
He would actually take, uh, take the chairman's signature.
A motion to approve and authorize the chair deciding the documents.
Make the motion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you. Okay, next review, open records request policy.
That's me. Yeah, it's, this is truly just the start of this, if we can do it. There's numerous counties that do have a policy and there's a form required if somebody comes in. Um, I did send it up to the attorneys. I told them this is no rush. I'm hoping by maybe March, if we can get something done. Um, Sean did send me back an email late Friday. And it comes, kind of sounds like across, there, there's been problems with this before. And, um, basically said, um, it was prior to him being attorney, that Buchanan County had a policy. But got in trouble because it created procedures and requirements that are not included in chapter twenty-two. Like the request had to be in writing, specific times for compliance, schedule of cost. Uh, and he said he thought it was before IFAB existed. And also the fact that the one that I, I've drafted strictly pertains to my office. It's nothing that you guys can approve or disapprove.
Cool.
So it doesn't apply to any other office owner?
Correct. You guys can, from what Sean said, you guys can approve one, but it can only be for the departments that you oversee.
Well, I have a.
So I, I don't know what's right or wrong with this. I just, I just want a better way from my office to track all this stuff, all these requests.
Um, I would like a way for you guys to track it too, because I know, like, um, so I was chatting with IT. And sometimes they get requests for open records. Like, why is IT, like, I think that all these requests for, should come into or be funnelled into one office because. If we're getting multiple or duplicate requests, why are we having two different offices go through the same motion?
Yeah, I didn't know IT ever got requests, though. That's news to me.
Yeah, so I mean, they're, they on occasion get requests also. So, and I don't know if the treasurer's office, do we know?
Certainly the recorder's office gets requests or information, so, I mean, it.
Well, that would be a different, that would be like somebody looking for a deed or something. That would be like kind of a different open, open records request. So that wouldn't be like what Chris is referring to.
And all the records in the recorder's office are open for public viewing?
Right. That would be kind of a, that would be a different request.
Yours are a little tougher to search for. It require a lot more research.
Yeah.
Do you get records requests down here off the sky?
Absolutely.
Well, how do you handle it then?
Uh, down there, it, it depends on if it's. Um, just a instant report or.
Open investigation.
Yeah, it depends if there's an actual case that was still pending or active. You know, some of them records are not released, if there's an ongoing criminal case or. If anybody can come down there and request a instant report, um, or, uh, calls for service, actually, uh, um. Public record that they can request to have, uh, just searching and making sure that there's not a criminal case or something legality that can be released. And there's usually a fee for some of those, those, um, requests, depends on what their request is.
Is this anything driven by like those First Amendment auditors and the.
Yes.
Sovereign citizens?
Lot of it is. You know, sometimes they're just requesting stuff to see if we'll comply.
Yeah.
Test it. Yes.
Well, on the, on the one hand, I can see how it's, it's useful to have a process and to say, hey, if you don't mind, would you follow this process? You'll make our life easier, et cetera, et cetera.
I do mind. That's what you're gonna hear from a couple of them, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, on the other side, in, in the time of federal DOGE, federal Department of Government efficiencies, and now Iowa, and now the governor's trying to put this on the state. And for the, the counties and cities, it, it may not be the right timing for this, but you know, I, I hear what you're looking for. I hear that we need a process. And I can see where it is useful to, to get rid of, oh, then even that's not the right way to say it, because we want people to be able to access their information. So I.
It's, um.
We're not trying to limit, but.
I'm gonna call it a work in progress.
Yeah.
And nothing will be finalized until Sean and I, or Josh, whoever, works together on what we can and cannot do.
Right, well, I'm just wondering, is there a way for when an open records request is received by one office for. An email to go out to the other offices that may receive the same request? And especially if it has to do with. And especially if it has to do with open investigations, there's only certain things that can be released. So are people trying to get around that and get information that should be released?
If some. Go ahead, Jason.
Oh, thank you. Uh, the open record requests that I T receives, every request uh is by email that I've ever received in my nine years. And it's always forwarded to the attorney's office for confirmation if it's legit or not, because there is quite a few fake uh emails out there and we always have to test legitimacy of them. So any open records that's completed by the I T department is first passed the attorney's office. And the handful that I've had over the years, all of them are just for emails and nine times out of ten, it's pertaining to another county or city. Then the communications we've had with those people. Uh, we have one person in particular that hits us about the same time every December to see if we'll be compliant or not. Since that's the holidays, most people are out of the office. Uh, and they also hit every other county in the state. It's kind of a yearly thing anymore. And we're one of the few that have never been sued by this person because we've fulfilled them in the correct amount of time and whatnot. So my office only processes a handful a year. Uh, I I'm pretty much betting that the auditor's office handles ninety-nine percent of them. But that's just how we do it here in the I T department.
Yeah, if I get ones that seem a little off base, definitely I go through the attorney's office before I do anything.
Would it help to to make a list of of the information requests that you fulfilled and kind of say, you know, on this date, we we fulfilled this request. Not necessarily naming the individual, but just.
Saved on the server of every request I've ever filled.
Yeah.
Um, but like Sean was just saying in that email, that in accordance to chapter twenty-two, I like to ask him to put something in writing.
Sure.
Well, kind of what he was saying that in chapter twenty-two, I can't require that.
Which makes sense, sure.
Doesn't really make sense.
No, it doesn't, because if you're asking for information, it should be in writing, because how do you know you're gonna get the right information?
You know, in the majority of them, I think I've only had one that's kind of rolled his eyes at me when I asked it and I just had him write down one sentence on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I I go back to having a simplified form if they could fill out.
See, and I I do have, I have put something of that together, but now Sean's like, eh, so I don't know.
I don't wanna make it real onerous, but I wanna have who wanna be able, who the person is and where they live and what they're looking for.
A lot of times, some of these, they won't give you their name. They may give you their first name. I had this just recently, just to that's all I would give. Right, that's your choice.
But my comeback would be, if you don't provide us this information, we can't provide you your information.
I would like to say that, but now I'm kind of thinking, if I do say that, I could be in trouble the way the code's written. That's why we, I really just need to work with the county attorney's office.
Well, the other thing is, if they ask you for some complicated information, that's gonna take you five hours to pull together, there has to be some compensation to the county for it.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, the code only states reasonable fee, well, what's reasonable fee?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, is how you came up with the fee schedule, because I mean.
It was just a thing of all.
Yeah.
A thingful of another county, that's all it is.
I know Jessup has something like that in place.
True. Right, Independence does too. I can tell you how much it is.
Yeah.
And the analytical form you put a lot.
How much of this?
And I mean, obviously, if Jason's getting emails, he's getting it in writing.
A lot of times, it's, sorry, Keith, it's a lot, I'm sorry. And a lot of times, it's through a third party company where they submit it to us. And I believe the Iowa law states it to what uh Chris had mentioned as far as compensation to county. Uh, it's not to be in excess of the employee's wage, something along those lines. So we couldn't charge like seven hundred dollars an hour or something ridiculous, but yeah. Sorry, that's my two cents.
Okay.
Guess that's all the questions left for them.
So basically, it's a work in progress and I'll just keep you guys updated on what we can and cannot do.
Yeah. I I would like to see some sort of procedure that we could share with the other department.
Yeah.
So we're consistent.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you. Okay, lastly, budget update.
All right, I left you guys a little packet. I've had to do a lot of shuffling. Um, as you can see, the um general basic is gonna stay the same. General sup is going up.
What's our limited sub, is it one?
There is not a limit. Um, the big reason for general sup, but general sup going up the point one eight four nine four. In order to bring the rural services levy down to give Brian his required funding, I had to pull more of that from the general than we have in the past. And in order to make that work, the fund transfer of five hundred thousand from general to general supplement, I had to decrease that to two hundred thousand. So that's why my general sup's going up, because that extra revenue from the general basic is not coming in, because we're using some of that funding to meet his require, Brian's requirements, because we couldn't take it all from rural, because we were way out of whack in rural. So then, if you look down at rural basic, we are going up point zero five zero nine seven oh. So overall, the levy increase is point one three eight seven. So on the, on that spreadsheet there that I have, the one oh eight seventy-one and the thirty-seven is basically a hundred and eight dollars excess we'll have of what we need with the general basic. Thirty-seven dollars with the general sup, but we're still gonna be short a hundred and fifty-three dollars in rural services. So overall, with our tax set, tax asking, um well, if every dollar and penny is spent on the budget that you guys will approve, we will get a whopping seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to go into our reserve. I I don't know what else to do. But the only other options are, I mean, either we can continue to roll with this or um we can go back through everything in general basic and try and cut.
At the bottom, you have four hundred and fifty-one thousand roughly that we would be short.
No, that's not what, that's the increase in tax dollars requested. Yep. So overall, with our tax asking for, from last year to this year, we're requesting four hundred and fifty-one thousand, four oh one twenty-nine more than what we did last year.
Percentage why?
A couple of weeks ago, that was up over eight hundred thousand. So I think we've done well, but bringing it down, at least cutting it in half. I mean, rural levy, we are well below the max. But I would hate to see a significant increase in rural supplemental or rural services, I'm sorry.
Why would we ever transfer money from general basic to general supplemental?
In the past, the levy was always at three fifty and until three years, uh, three years ago, we had to go above that. And I believe, and I don't know, I was only one year in when we changed. They just stayed at the max. And so they would, then they, and that money would go from the general basic into the supplement to keep the supplemental down. Keep your percentage of tax asking for that, because you cannot tax general supplemental unless you are at your max in general basic.
So they kept us at a max in general basic.
And then that excess funds, they moved to general supplemental, so they, that task act to use in tax and asking would be lower. That almost come out really bad.
So overall, it looks like we're at a four and a half percent increase over last year. My math is correct. And those are, just our rock alone is eight and a half percent.
Uh, eight point four last year. This year was six point three on one, six points six on one, so. And that's, those are big items.
Yeah, you're talking millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Good guess at the mountain, we have to.
And this is going to how is this gonna? Do we have an example where our levy rate for our?
Levy rates in that column right there, F Y twenty-six. General basic is three point eight one two seven four, general sup is one nine two six five. Rural basic is three point zero one four six four, which those coincide.
Point oh five, so.
Yeah, so that third column shows you the um general sup, it's not seeing an increase, or I'm sorry, general basic is not seeing an increase, but general sup is the point one eight four nine four increase. And rural basic is zero five zero nine seven zero percent of an increase.
Got you. Those are resident, they're not gonna see a really huge significant.
If you take, now I can't remember off the top of my head, we have like twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and some odd parcels. If you divide that four fifty-one, four oh one point two nine by that twenty-one something thousand, each parcel's gonna see approximately about a twenty dollar increase. Does it seem like much? No. But if there's a person that has five hundred parcels, yeah, they're gonna see, they're gonna see an increase.
Yeah.
John, you thoughts?
I don't I don't see a realistic way of going back in and whacking more out of it myself, but interested in what you guys think.
We hit them pretty hard. I mean, the only, the only avenues that I could see that we could nickel and dime off of it, but uh, it'll be, it's not gonna be.
It's not gonna be significant.
It's not gonna be four hundred thousand dollars.
Ryan, your bridge needs to sell for a lot more money than what you're anticipating getting out of it. Just gotta throw that out.
What was that again?
Your bridge needs to sell for a higher dollar amount.
Yeah. Uh, it doesn't work that way.
I truly think the departments did an excellent job this year. In fact, I think we've always had department heads that were very conscious about their bud- budget. Unfortunately, just like everybody else's budget, I mean, you were just talking how your electric bill went up a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, the county expenses increase also because of inflation, just like everybody else's does. That's the hard part.
Yes, a large majority of the departments actually cut their budgets and somehow still got that raises and kind of things else we cut.
And overall, um I mean, our valuations weren't up that much. We had a two point six five percent growth. Overall, I think with just a point one three eight seven percent of a levy increase is pretty darn good. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want my taxes going up, but unfortunately, reality is reality.
And you know, my taxes are gonna increase by what, twenty dollars? That's McDonald's. Amelia McDonald's.
So.
Two days at Starbucks.
Yeah, or one and a half of these.
So it's up to you guys. If you're okay with the figures I've presented, I would like to proceed with the next step in our financial software and turning, putting it into the doc, department of management, so I can start creating files for this mailing that we have that has to go out.
Well, there's a way to save money. Let's just not send them any money.
Yeah.
Follow up on that, or?
I got told that it wasn't, it went, when the code passed, it'd been passing the code and I'm like, it but it did. So I don't know. It was in the sign, in the final signed bill of House File seven eighteen.
It's gonna go on a die on.
Maybe we can convince Blackrock.
Well, I'm the one, let's back up a minute, cause I'm the one that sends that mailing out. I don't want that coming back on me.
Yeah. Uh, I would entertain a motion to have Chris proceed with the department management files.
Mm-hmm, I'll second it. I will make that motion.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Do you wanna roll call on that or?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Chris, and if at some point in time you could tell me how much I'm getting out of which area, that would help me too. Do I get, what do I expect?
You are getting the bottom dollar you put in for, because it didn't matter what we asked, you still come up with the same bottom dollar.
Categories it comes out of, so I was.
Nothing, none of that's changed.
Okay. So do I still assume that some of that's gonna be local option sales tax?
Everything for local option sales tax goes into rural services. That's the way it has been for.
Okay, so I could just leave it alone and not worry about, I'll just leave nothing in the
Yep.
local off sales tax, that's for me.
Yep. And you guys will all get updated sheets.
Yeah, thank you.
So we just have it printed and reprinted and reprinted until I.
That's good.
Till.
I get real confused on which ones the.
I think you do, turn, turn, who, who, yeah.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll go to public comment. Public comment. Got anything?
Comment on, we should brought up on the, on the um the raises, I hope, that the payments that you guys were getting. And I hope you got raises, because over the last few years, I mean, it's, it's easy for people to come in here and sit and think, oh, well, that's all they do, you know, they're done. No, they show up for a couple of hours on Monday and they're done. None of those people that were here the last two, three years. Where you guys put in time after time after time and had to take a bunch of flak from everybody on both sides. And if anybody did earned a raise, and I really, I haven't, I don't care what you guys make, I haven't paid any attention to it. But I truly hope that you guys got a raise to cover the work that you put in over the last few years, because if anybody deserves it, you guys did.
Thank you, Brian. That's very nice.
I appreciate that.
That's our job.
Yeah.
Some days are worse than others. Got to get anything going?
Hope to start jail, paying right now, that's a process. Making things difficult over there, but yeah.
John's a lot of logistics, getting them back and forth to Delaware.
Yes, there's more, there's always more to it than what you hope. It's working, they're, they're working well. They, you know, they just asked to give them a call before we could come over and check them off record or whatever they might be, or they're getting out or whatever that might be. So they've been really decent to work with us last week and they do this process here, so. It might be a three or four week project, more than I was kinda hoping for a two week project, but.
It's an honor meeting the new Delaware attorney sheriff. And he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
Truly nice.
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna do well.
I did uh put on each your desk a Pioneer Cemetery Commission update.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And just your information. I don't think it needs to be a big agenda item. If there's no more public comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So they'll get.